Agenda for the regular meeting from May 9, 2024 to order and turn things over to Pastor Cooper to lead us in indication.
Start for it tonight. Let's take a moment to remember about the memory of Joe Alvera. Father, we come to United Board, yet thinking this time that we can go about the business of the town that are serving our communities. Or we, as we do say, we pause. Thank you for the life of Joe. Thank you for his service. Thank you for his friendship. Hope you'll be blessed with the glory of his family and friends are grieving, Father, I pray Lord, you give them comfort. Let them know that you're near and bless them, Lord. Father, as we meet tonight, we pray that your Spirit is with us and will lead us in God is all things, Lord. Father, we know that there is meaning hurting, Lord, whether it be through death, as we've experienced in even our own church, even my own family this past week, Lord. Many people are hurting because of just lack of food or lack of shelter. Father, we pray, Lord, that you will bless those, Lord, to provide for those, Lord, whether it's a physical need, Lord, or it's a need of comfort, Lord. Father, continue to lift up Christ's feet tonight, Lord, continue to bless his body, Lord, for Oxford Allen, Lord. And as we look forward to seeing the day that he's able to come back and work, Lord. And Father, I just continue to pray for everybody that's here tonight, Lord, for their families, Lord, protect them, Lord, keep them safe, Lord. Keep them well, for their presence, Lord, and just bless this being tonight as our leaders make decisions. As we look to make Youngsville even better place to live, and it's in Christ that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Next up is the approval of the agenda. As you probably already know, if you checked your emails, we had a couple of things that came in last minute that we need to go ahead and take action on. So we will need to amend the agenda to include those. One is the docket that we have here about the potential traffic deviations as well as amendment to fee schedule. Did I miss anything with that?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, all right. So having said that, I will entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Thank you much to amend.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
And any opposed? That motion carries. And then I guess we'll get along into. Actually, do I need to make a motion to go ahead and approve the amended agenda?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you for that, Madam Clerk. Next up is item three, public hearings. Item A under that is the proposed budget for fiscal year end 2025. I will go ahead and open the public hearing to the public as of 7:03. And I know we've kind of gone over quite a bit, but if you had anything that you wanted to add to the staff report, I know we talked about the trash truck, the bypass, and if there's any other items that you would like to discuss in your staff report.
I'll just take a second to answer that.
Absolutely.
The fiscal year 25 minutes recommended budget was distributed during the March meeting of the board of commissioners. The budget includes purchase of an automated trash truck to assist with solid waste collection. The budget prioritizes construction of the bypass with the straightening of Cedar Creek to take place through the locally administered planning project process as soon as possible. This budget also makes the next steps for the creation of an additional town park in alignment with the park's master plan. There was also a last minute request by the park's director to increase the late registration fee for sports to $100 per person. That may be more than the board is interested in seeing. It is currently $10. If we were to go somewhere in the middle, that would be wonderful, whatever the board desires there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, and having heard that, I'll go ahead and open things up to comments from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who signed up online to speak? Okay, any other comments from the public, anyone in the room? In regards to the proposed budget fiscal year in 2025, citizens' comments will come after this. So any, anything, anyone wants to discuss, any comments on the proposed budget? All right, seeing and hearing none, I will go ahead and close the hearing as of 7:05 and move into citizens' comments. I know we had one person that registered, Mr. Adams. I hope I'm not butchering this name too bad. Is it Ziger? Zigar, okay. Adam, the floor is yours, sir.
Beautiful pair of started with Tom Halls I've got to. I haven't done that. So it's nice to see that. That's the tradition here. So like I said, my name's Adam Zigar. I'm a resident here in Youngsville. I'm here in 2022 from Apex. We came out here, live in the whole creek community. And from day one, I gotta say, we loved it here. You know, last two years have been great. The community is very vibrant as well. I mean, yeah, you know, we just, we feel at home. We feel proud to call Youngsville our house, our home. So today, my message, it's, it isn't going to be about me. It's not going to even be about the town per se. It's more of a request from me. My message today is more about humanity. We're all aware of what's going on in the Middle East. We don't need to rehash the, you know, the details and the atrocities going out there. But unlike any era in history, we have real time access to what's happening. We see on our phones and social media, we're seeing all kinds of horrible things. And we've seen, we've seen here in the U.S. something very concerning in that people who are peacefully protesting are often getting labeled by either media or politicians, you know, as we're anti-Semitic, we're terrorism, or this or that. You know, I'm a Semite myself. I'm Arab, so I speak their language. So I'm clearly not anti-Semitic, but that's, you know, beside the point. These are all just distractions. These labels, these gaslighting attempts is just a distraction to divert people's attention from what's happening out of the ground. So I know that both they're, you know, they're from perspectives and people will say, well, you know, if Hamas releases hostages, this war would end tomorrow. Well, they did actually agree to a ceasefire proposal. But, you know, unfortunately, Israel reneged on that and decided not to proceed with it. So right now, as you know, they are in Rafah. They are bombing and destroying people living in tents. And my thing tonight to the board before me is to stand with the members of your community and the members at large in North Carolina and in the nation. And to just simply pass a ceasefire resolution. I know that passing ceasefire resolution in town of Youngsville is going to have no impact on what actually happens in the ground over there. I understand that. I'm not naive. But what it does do is that it puts us on the bright side of history. And it shows that we're willing to stand up for oppression, denounce the collective punishments and killing of the innocent. Forty thousand women, children, and nine over there, plus the forced starvation that they're having to deal with. So my, my message is just simply to, you know, I understand it's a foreign policy issue. I get that. Trust me, I'm not naive. But there are other counties in North Carolina that have passed ceasefire resolutions. And it would just make, you know, it would just sort of show that solidarity with constituents who do want to see a ceasefire resolution, no matter how impactful or not it might be. It just, it puts us on the right side of history. And so that, that's my message. I thank you guys all for your time, and I hope to get to know more of you in the community future.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zigar.
Thank you.
All right, any other citizens' comments? All right, seeing and hearing none, we'll move along into the consent agenda. And I had one page and I've got two pages. Okay, sorry. Action requested here is to approve the consent agenda as submitted. So here a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Right.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Old business. Item A is fiscal year end 2025 proposed budget with a tax rate of .55. The action requested here is to approve the fiscal year end 2025 budget with a tax rate of .55. I know we've kind of hashed this out for a couple of months now, discussing what we need out of this. I think it's been very well presented and very well documented. So I don't know if the commissioners have any questions, comments, or concerns. If not, I will entertain motion to approve the fiscal year end 2025 budget with a tax rate of .55. Move to approve.
Second. Is this where we approve?
Hang on a sec. We got a first and a second. Now we're in discussion. Go ahead.
Is this where we're approving the fee schedule change too?
If you were to do one, you could do so here.
Okay.
It could also be adopted separately, whatever you.
Okay, I remember you saying something about the amended adoption. That's what I was asking.
Yeah, we can do, I mean, if you wanted to do that in new business.
Okay, cool.
I would do that.
I would like to say, though, thank you for all your hard work and the staff on the budget, and I really like where the money is going. I think it is perfect. I'm really happy with what we're doing.
All right, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Seven, new business. A, presentation of the 2024 Vernon Dean's Honor Award Outstanding Small Town or Rural Plan, Youngsville Comprehensive Land Use and Transportation Plan 2050. The action requested here, which I love giving kudos and props to our staff when they do a tremendous job. And I've got notes here that says that I need to commend planner Lucy Garcia for her tireless dedication to the town of Youngsville and extend our gratitude for the hard work she has implemented to marshal Youngsville into the future. And I would concur with that. I think it's absolutely fantastic. Obviously, you are still on the newer side of things, but you came highly recommended from Mr. Page. And he clearly hit it out of the park because he said you were amazing, and I would concur with that sentiment. For those who don't know that are in this room, one, I kind of like the idea of Youngsville being awesome, right? I like for us to have them cool stuff, being one of one. And right here, Youngsville, North Carolina is one of one because that is the, the best plan for a town in these United States of America. That's impressive. So.
Congratulations.
Now, now we get a photo. You're normally behind the camera. This time you're gonna be a fuck.
It's here. It didn't be.
Let it look like a. Nobody saw that.
Take that shine off his head, okay?
There you go.
We'll turn the flash on. Come on, man.
Yay, good job.
Got a gold star for that.
Star tree. Mr. Mayor, if I may read a couple of stuffs as well about.
Absolutely can.
In 2021, the town of Youngsville hired Ray T. P. as a consultant to update our land use plan and to add a transportation component. After more than a year of work, meetings, and public hearings, the consultant delivered the Youngsville 2050 plan. The Youngsville Board of Commissioners then adopted the plan on November 9th, 2023. Town staff felt that this plan was something special and with a great deal of effort put in by the public to steer development and choices in and around Youngsville. Staff submitted an application to the American Planning Association Small Town or Rural Plan Award. The town was driven for first place the honor award, and the decision was announced at the National Planning Conference in Minneapolis. Lucy Garcia, the town's planner, was present to receive the award. This honor conveys that the town has the best comprehensive plan in the entire United States of America. That's quite an accomplishment considering that there are more than 40,000 jurisdictions in our country. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Again, it's, it's pretty amazing. And yeah, we're very proud and honored for your diligence and your, and your hard work. So thanks again. Did you want to give a speech? I'll give the floor to you, and you could tell us how awesome we are. No? Okay, all right. It was worth a shot. Come on, man. It's worth a shot. All right, so, so nothing? Okay, you're good. Okay, all right. I concur with that. Absolutely. So item B, fiscal year end 2024 audit contract, S. Preston Douglas and Associates LLC. Those are the guys who have been running with our audits the past several years. They've done phenomenal job with getting it, getting it to us ahead of time. So I think the action requested here, approve engagement letter and audit contract with S. Preston Douglas and Associates LLC for fiscal year end 2024. Move to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? That motion also carries unanimously. Item C, evaluate NCDOT options for truck traffic in Youngsville. We do have an action requested here, but I'm going to turn things over to Mr. Page really quickly. If you wanted to open, I'll open the floor to you to discuss any items you would like to.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. In 2019, the board directed the previous town administrator, Phil Portiero, to email NCDOT's traffic engineer, ask him for trucks to be rerouted from Main Street. There were other communications, calls, and many, many, many emails in the intro. On Wednesday, January 17th, 2024, Brian Mayhew, the state traffic engineer, met with Mayor Flowers, Mayor Pro Tim Brain, and staff. We walked Main Street and observed the volume of truck traffic. Mr. Mayhew said that he would follow up with options for the town to investigate. On Tuesday, May 7th, 2024, Brian Mayhew, the state engineer, came to Youngsville's town hall and delivered the attached options. He stated that the town would need to bear the cost and make all of the requests to have any designation of Highway 96 changed. There were five options presented, which will be shown momentarily. The board should adopt a preferred option, which staff will coordinate with neighboring jurisdictions. So option one would reroute Highway 96 to go straight along US 1 instead of, it goes straight on instead of turning where Food Line is. And then it would go and follow Old Street through Main Street down Tarver Road to 401. The estimated cost for that was $17,000 with a signage. Option two would take the truck route to be concurrent with Highway 98 and then, excuse me, US 1 and then Highway 98. And it would pick back up on the southeast side just past the roundabout. The estimated cost for signage for this one was the most expensive at $100,000. And that included some of the overhead signs that would need to be changed along US 1, particularly in the vicinity of Highway 98. The third option had an estimated cost of $12,000 and would simply remove the portion of Highway 96 that is, I wonder what happened there. Would remove the portion of Highway 96 between five point intersection and where the Food Line is. There was an option four that would eliminate US 1A through Wake Forest, Youngsville, Wake County, and Franklin County, which would require federal approval because US 1A is a, is a federal route. And then option five is presented by NCDOT was to do nothing but upgrade the existing traffic signal that cross street to 80 pedestrian signals and signal pole replacements.
So after the meeting that we had earlier this week with those guys on Tuesday, Mr. Brain, myself, and Mr. Page kind of toss it out. I know what my option is, the one that stands out to me. I think it's the one that is obviously more feasible in what we're trying to do. It is the most expensive. But if I'm gauging them, it's option two, then option one, and then the rest kind of fall out. Obviously, we would like to get some kind of consensus and put that into a, we'll put it to a vote to see which one we want to, that way you've got the direction and how you need to approach that. So.
Can I read this question then?
We'll just kind of open out, yes, open it forward.
So when we change the signage or we, you know, kind of move the truck route with signage, how does that work as far as like trucks just see new signs and go new ways? Does Google and Waze like move in that direction? Are we able to give them a penalty for now taking this route? Like, how do we implement it actually, some, a change happening besides signage?
Yeah, great, great question. All of the above. It takes, it takes a long time. Even if Highway 96 was to be dedicated here, directed here tomorrow, it would still take months for the signage to all be changed. And amongst those is the street signs, right? Southeast of town, it's known as Zebulon Road, and so there's not as big of an impact as 96 past Cross. Highway 96 between Wake Electric and Food Line, I don't believe that it's ever had any other name. So there are some addresses that are going to need to be impacted through there. And the Board of Commissioners could, at some point in time, and staff have recommended they do, adopt a resolution similar to what we did for, for instance, in Pine Streets, that would then give the police officers the authority to enforce the no trucks through there. That, that ought to be months after the new signage is in place. That would allow, Google doesn't so much have a truck route option, but there are actually GPS routes that identify where the truck routes should be. And that's why, other than when there have been railroad crossing closings, you haven't seen a mobile home down Franklin Street. They, there was a day where they all tried to go down Franklin Street when they closed the, the train tracks. And it was most entertaining to be a burnt barrel for that event. But the, for the most part, they stay on, the large vehicles stay on the routes that they're supposed to be on, that are state designated routes for them. And as you're aware, our police officers are phenomenal. They're not going to go and look out for somebody to try and, to try and nail them for something when they're, when they're just lost. They're going to find somebody that's a repeat offender that has been coming down here and been talked to 30 times, that's driving long distances. That's not just somebody, you know, no one would give somebody a ticket that's going to deliver a transformer to Larry's place. Those trucks would always be permitted. The delivery trucks for sharings, always permitted. The folks going to K-Flex, always permitted. It's the, it's the non-local traffic that we would write a resolution on for the food trucks.
And, and I'll add that Brian Mayhew with NCDOT was very adamant about if we, if DOT takes that route away from them, you can't have a truck just show up downtown and have nowhere else to go. I mean, you can't just turn around, you know, downtown, obviously. So the signage would have to be further enough, far enough back to direct them where they need to go. That was something that he mentioned over and over again. And, and I'll, I'll add to what Mayor Flowers was saying. We, we talked about this with DOT. And with, with our vision for the future of having a walkable downtown where you can have a conversation out on the sidewalk and feel safe. It's the only option, option two, that we're looking at here, that gets the trucks off of Main Street. It's the only one. The others try and help the flow of traffic, but all the, all the others still have tractor trailers coming through our downtown. So that's why we saw option two is, is basically being, being the only option that fits with our future, uh, future vision.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with Scott. I mean, option one and three, essentially all they're doing is changing how they're pulling onto Main Street. But our problem isn't the traffic on the feeders into Main Street. The problem is traffic on Main Street. So just having them take Holden Road versus 96 doesn't really change anything other than they're taking one road other than the other.
And, and we also identified in the meeting that obviously the best solution would be to have the bypass that we're working towards. But with that, nowhere in the, the near future, we're, we're looking at every option we can, and this seems to be the best option to help in, in the near term.
And this may actually help kind of push a little bit. I mean.
And that's a reasonable price to be an option to get us to the bypass.
Yep.
To do something between now and bypass. I think that's it.
If it was a million dollars, I would have a lot of heartache.
Yeah.
Any additional, but I mean.
For the street.
Yes, sir.
Going to enforce it?
Yes, sir.
I still see trucks on Winston Street.
Eighteen millers?
Two.
Okay.
Two and Joe does.
That's, that's fine. I mean, this will help up top.
Do we feel pretty secure in moving forward with option two? Were there other additional comments on any of the other options? Did anything else kind of stand out with those?
I'll, I'll add that this option does involve assistance from the county. So they will be played a, a big role in making this happen. It'll involve reaching out to at least the town of Wake Forest, potentially Wake County. I don't know. But there, there's going to be a lot of parties involved to make this happen, and we've got to get the ball rolling on our end. It's not up to DOT to, to do it. It's, it's up for us to initiate it.
Which, you know, that's something that we've, we've been doing. We, we make things happen. So I can't imagine a scenario where the county commissioners wouldn't be supportive of this. I mean, just for disclosure and transparency. So.
So I mean, I may be wrong in saying the only sign on 96 that says anything about Youngsville is about five miles toward 401. Right when you go over 401, it'll say five miles to Youngsville at that point. That's the only signs even coming up Capitol Boulevard. Am I wrong?
So, so what they'd have to do, so if now the, the lower portion down there is 96, so when you're coming north on US 1 and you have the 98 bypass, it says, here's 98. They're going to have to add that, hey, now this is 96 as well.
And maybe.
Yeah, they'll have to update those overhead signs.
My point to being is, is we don't have any signs and we have people coming here anyway. So if we do have signs out that far, then hopefully that will help push it along where we.
Well, I think at the roundabout, the 96, 98 roundabout, it would have to probably be some signs there that says no through trucks.
Yes, sir.
To get them circling and, and heading back in the direction we need to.
I think it's the best option by far.
Yeah. Commissioner Wiggins, are you unanimous with option two? Do you see a better or different option?
I agree. It's the best option.
I think so. I feel like we got a couple of gentlemen in the back that can certainly help us with the enforcement piece of it. All right, well, it sounds like we have consensus on option two. So again, the action requested here is to approve a preferred option for staff to begin the process of interlocal agreements. Madam Clerk, would you like to have that as a motion?
Yes.
Motion to approve a preferred option for staff to begin the process of an interlocal agreement.
Option two.
Option two.
Second.
All right, got a first and a second. Any additional discussion before we move to vote?
I would just like to say that we've talked about this for.
A lot. Twenty years.
Like 12 years ago, I was on the board and we were talking about all the traffic in downtown. And I remember because I said, you want me to stop the trucks and just jump on up there and ask them where they're going? It was a, it was a long night that night. So I'm really excited. Like this is, this is a really good step. And even if it doesn't get 100%, even if it only gets 50% off of downtown, it's worth it. It's worth it for the people that are using downtown and walking in the businesses and being able to park and all those good things. So I'm super excited about it.
All right, thank you for that. Any additional discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? That motion all so carries unanimously. And we did mention at, we did mention earlier that we would need to add an, an action item. I forgot to call it out at the beginning, but item D under new business. Is that okay, Madam Clerk? Okay, item D is adopting the amended fee schedule. Obviously, there's some concerns about late registrations, and we are actually taking a hit on our side. So it's a. So it's a, a fee to help recoup anyone who doesn't sign up within the three month window when registrations are actually open. So um, I'll open the floor to any questions, comments, or concerns. And then if we want to entertain a motion, I will certainly do that.
So just to open up discussion on it. I'm just reading through this now where it says we paid six hundred and fifty dollars extra to brush a new uniform. So this was a new team. It wasn't necessarily, hey, we have a team and we need to have one player type deal.
I don't have all the specifics.
Okay.
And if y'all want to wait and do it later, we can do that. Um, it, I, I don't have the specifics.
Yeah.
I know that there were four people that signed up late. There may have been an extra team. If that's the case, then it wasn't a hundred dollars per year. Um, but I, I believe it was the cost in addition to what we were already paying for jerseys and everything.
Yeah. And we don't have, do we have the option to say you just have to pay whatever the additional cost is? And then, does it have to be a specific number? Or can we say you have to pay the, the fee plus whatever additional cost it was to?
You can do that. You can do the actual cost.
Because this could change from year to year.
A hundred dollars on the steep, man. I mean, I, I mean, I don't know if that's for a kickball team, so obviously that's adults. So if it's a kid, it's a late entry, can't charge the kid a hundred dollars, right?
Love just a few more details before we actually.
We can certainly continue to the next meeting. Uh, but I think we do want to have it in prior to the registration closing for, because I believe she currently has fall baseball registration going on now, correct?
Yeah, and actually Mayor Pro Tim Brain pointed out to me that there is already a ten dollar late registration fee in there. So it's covered under the existing fee schedule. Um, my apologies, I missed that when I was going through the fee schedule.
Because that was going to be a concern. If we don't have anything, we probably need to adopt something to cover. Because we can always go back in subsequent meetings and then rescind or amend or, or whatever. Um, so does everyone feel com- comfortable with just continuing until the next meeting? Madam Clerk, is that okay with you? Do you want to hear it as a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do I hear a motion to continue um, the amended fee schedule to the?
To the table.
Second. Got a first and a second. Look, I was going to call out the date, but I don't know what that date would be.
Hang on, got you.
Next month's May. What is it? June thirteenth? June thirteenth. Okay. That'll give us some time to get some stuff together.
Second, I was trying to grab the calendar.
Commissioner Wiggins.
Okay.
And Joe, the second.
Thank you.
All right, we've got a first and a second. Any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, continue to the next meeting. Uh, reports and other business, uh, we had the litter sweep, uh, went well. Um, I believe that was a scenario where we didn't get a lot of bags, which is a good thing because it's kind of trending in a better direction. We still got a lot of bags, though. It's still an issue. Um, I don't know what the solution to that is. We've got the signage up that says keep North Carolina clean and beautiful. Um, I just, I, I don't have an answer for someone being so lazy to just roll their window down and throw it out. Um, Mr. Johnson, I saw someone, not here in town, but at a different location the other day, just rolled up to a stop sign, rolled the window down, just bunked it right out. So, um, you cannot change s- uh, behaviors in people if they're going to litter at, again. Um, anyway, um, I could talk about that all night. I won't do that because I'm sure y'all are already bored about hearing about trash. Uh, the new park is open uh, in town. We had uh, Representative Winslow and Senator Barnes coming in for a photo op for that. Uh, definitely want to thank them for their efforts in helping us make that a reality. Uh, we do appreciate what the Kiwanis did in the past when they first built the park. Um, but after about thirty years, it's time to upgrade and, and get it changed out. So we've got some really nice new safer equipment out there. And also want to thank the, the kindergarten students at Youngsville Elementary for helping us pick the color pattern and good to go. And uh, very excited about the traction with D O T uh, for the truck traffic. So um, that's it for me, and I will turn things over to Commissioner Rina.
Hey.
Hi.
I was happy to be out there um, picking up trash. It's the maybe third year I've done it, but I, I think it's really great to see how many people come together. There was like a hundred people. It was crazy. It was awesome. Um, glad there's a new playground. And to throw that in there, I am actually a member of Kiwanis for meeting next Tuesday and talking about our annual budget and things that we're going to be doing. So if anyone has anything they would like to throw out there, whether it be sponsoring um, some youth sports or anything of that nature, anything we think of, let me know. I will throw it out at our Tuesday meeting.
Okay.
They're always riveting, those meetings. Love them.
You sold that pretty good.
That is all that I have, sir.
All right, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Persson.
Um, I could not attend, but the Chamber of Commerce did have their golf tournament. Some guys stood to see it. Doesn't like they got any sunburnt today.
So, sunscreen.
I'm sure, um, sure that was great. Uh, Youngsville A B C, I know they were uh, helping support some stuff. And they just uh, broke ground on their new uh, second A B C store slash storage facility. Um, and the park feel nice. Uh, my son's played on it a few times. He loves it.
Awesome, awesome. Anything else?
That's it.
All right, Commissioner Brain.
Yeah, to add on with the, the chamber event today, I think Youngsville was very well represented as comparatively. Um, and you know, to other areas of the county, we, yeah. So for businesses and uh, faith pastors were there, Wake Electric was there. Uh, we were there for the town, so uh, it was a great event. Um, got a campo meeting next Wednesday, and then we have a campo uh, meeting. It's called, um, we're working on a blueprint for safety. And the next meeting is May twenty-third, I assume, right here in this room.
Yes, sir.
Um, on, on May, yeah, May twenty-third, uh, two to four, I believe it is. And it's going to focus on specific uh, ideas for Franklin County. Um, so we'll have some county commissioner people here, hopefully some of the other municipalities joining in the talk. So um, I'm sure I will bring up the truck traffic again during that like I have in the past. So um, just a, a new initiative for campo. And um, hopefully this will be another avenue for us to have our wanted projects uh, score higher uh, if we can point to safety issues. Yeah.
Want to show up to that meeting?
I don't see why not.
Okay.
So, um, I'll, I'll forward you the invite. All right, um, master parks and rec plan on the heels of the comprehensive land use and transportation plan. We had a meeting, the last week, two weeks, I don't know, they run together now. Um, where the, dropping on the name, the consultants provided uh, some draft uh, plans for some potential rec centers. And so it's, it's getting exciting to see some real plans out there. Um, I had to leave early to go coach baseball in the middle of that. So I don't know if, uh, Nathan, if you have anything to add from that, that meeting?
Just that the process is wrapping up and we should see the final document come before you guys in July. Um, all the bells and whistles will be on then, uh, and, and we'll be able to formally adopt this plan that will then hopefully allow us to go and chase harder funds, but also potentially enter into public partner partnerships with some uh, local nonprofits that have similar missions. Maybe serve a group of local kids or something.
I think that's all I've got. Okay, thank you for that. Uh, Commissioner Johnson.
I got nothing, Mayor. Thank you.
All right, and Commissioner Wiggins? All right, um, there is no need to go into closed session, so I will entertain a motion. I'm sorry, I'm just kidding. Dude, wow, I got real fast on that. I just assumed y'all didn't have anything else to add. That's my bad. Um, Ms. Katie Barber Jones, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
No.
See, I'm a mind reader.
No, I'm a good stewardess. Thank you, sir.
Perfect. And um, anything, I'll just kind of throw it out to staff in general.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have you, um, I wanted to just extend our gratitude towards Representative Winslow and Senator Barnes for the funds that they found for the playground review. And then we received the half million dollars in reimbursement for the right of way that we purchased, um, which covered eighty-something percent of what we paid, um, including attorneys and surveyor fees for the portions that we bought from the Boss Brothers. Uh, and then five points, uh, I learned that the intersection there, the last piece to make that project move along is an interlocal between N C D O T and Franklin County for some water line work. I reached out to Chair Foye and County Manager Kim Denton and County Clerk Chris King, Kristen King to ask out to be on the agenda on May twentieth. That's their next upcoming meeting to get that interlocal approved. Um, if that interlocal was signed today, we'd probably see construction tomorrow. Uh, unfortunately, their next meeting doesn't happen until that May twentieth date. So I'll be there in person and we'll um, make the same request again. My hope is it'll be on that interlocal.
If I, if I may really quickly, when did you initially reach out to the county manager about this?
I, I was uh, informed of this on Tuesday. And I reached out on Tuesday afternoon. Um, and I have not, as of this moment, received a response from any county individuals.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. Please continue.
Mr. Mayor, that was all that I have.
The golf tournament is May thirty-first. They, we have some minimum amount of room left. I think a couple of teams left. So anybody that hasn't signed up, you need to sign up now. The golf balls have arrived and they have the Phantom's logo on them. They look very, very good. Um, tomorrow, Sesquicentennial meeting is at ten o'clock in this room. Along with our other business, we are also discussing having a birthday party. The main event is going to be November seventeenth. However, our actual date of incorporation was March seventeenth. And because March is a rainy month, it's hard to have a good event. So we will be discussing having a, just a small birthday event on Monday, March seventeenth. So that will be, I'll be able to update y'all better on that next month. But so far, so good. We'll have the golf tournament, so get fundraiser. And then following that, our next fundraiser will be the barbecue cook-off in September. And that is all I have.
All right, anything else from staff?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, absolutely, please.
So our selective enforcement supervisor, Corporal Barrington Simpson, on May fourth, issued a directive to all patrol personnel to begin on May sixth. So just a few days ago, uh, through June third, to conduct two hours of selective enforcement. First shift, first squad, he said that this could be done uh, two hours in one hour increments between six A M and nine P M. Begin night shift uh, between nine P M and six A M with a minimum of one hour per shift, per squad, uh, focusing on Winston Street and South, like North Cross Streets. Um, and that would include a zero tolerance enforcement action for any trucks that they find on those truck lanes. I'll have a full detailed report about results of this operation for our June meeting, but I'm happy to entertain any questions, train, and fight operations.
Any questions, comments, concerns from the commissioners? Thank you, Chief. Hey, guys, I want to apologize about kind of skipping through. I don't know if you guys noticed. Um, this is the first time in eleven years that I've actually got a gavel. And I think I got super excited about banging it, so I'm going to put it back down for right now because don't want to jump. Okay, so any additional comments from staff? That's good to go. There is no need for a closed session. So now I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second, kind of first, we got a second. Is there any discussion before we move to vote? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear not.